All right.
Thank you so much for joining us.
We're going to get started. Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County, I welcome the candidates, and especially you, the audience, to this free public forum for the City Council of East Palo Alto. My name is Linda Popke, and I will be your moderator for this evening. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan volunteer organization of women and men. Our educational mission is to encourage our active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased information in order to make an informed decision on or before Election Day, November 6th. In addition to this forum, I encourage you to visit the California State League of Women Voters election website, which is votersedge.org, for information about all the candidates and measures on your ballot. Please note, this forum is being recorded. It will be posted on the League website. To begin again, if you can just double-check that you've turned off your cellphone. Hold your applause until the end. Questions will be taken from the audience. There are volunteers that are here with three-by-five cards, and if you would like a three-by-five card, please put your hand up, and a volunteer will find you. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine who goes first, and they are sitting in that order. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. They will also have two minutes to respond to each question. A League of Women Voters volunteer will monitor the time. Okay. There are two seats to be elected to the East Palo Alto Council. There are seven candidates, four of which are with us today. Two of the candidates, Regina Wallace-Jones and Patricia Lopez, told us that they weren't able to attend due to emergency reasons. They have each submitted their two-minute opening statement, which I will read after the four candidates here give theirs. Okay? The fifth candidate, Randall Fields, has not submitted a statement. Okay? We're going to get going. So each candidate will read their two-minute opening statement. We ask that you look carefully at Joanne. Joanne, raise your hand here in the front row, and she will tell you. Two minutes, one minute, 30 seconds. When your time is up, she'll tell you to stop. Okay. Again, if you would like a question, a three-by-five card to write down questions, please do that. Okay. We're going to start, and we will be changing the order as we go, but to start with, we're going to start here. Okay. All right. So we're going to start with Donna. And Donna, if you could please, Donna Rutherford, if you could please give us your opening statement.
Yes. I'd like to thank the League of Women's Voters for having this candidate's forum. Let me start by saying that I support Measure HH, the parcel tax, on commercial office space over 2500 square feet, and it's going to provide jobs and housing. And I'm going to vote, well, I encourage the statewide ballot measures, yes on 1, 2, 3, 8, 10, 12, and no on 5, 6, and 11. I'm impressed with the candidate's interest to run for a seat on the City Council. That says to me that the current council have done something right. Not perfect, but something right. We are succeeding. This past year, our city was, in the past years, our city was called City on the Move. We are moving forward. We had a strategic planning retreat. We held our staff and our council and the community was invited to come and fashion our vision and challenges for the city. Only person I remember coming to that meeting was Court Skinner, just for a little while, but at least he was here, and that was an important meeting. Council members agreed and disagreed, but in the end, the strategic priorities were developed, some short-term and some long-term. First and foremost, today, my focus is then: traffic, housing, homelessness, infrastructure, and no more displacement of longtime residents. These are some of the challenges we face today. We have balanced the budget, and after several years, we have a healthy reserve. The police department filled vacant positions, and there was a question about the budget being so large for the police department. You know, we provided more community policing for a safer community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we have a buzzer. Okay. Ruben. Ruben Nabrika.
I'm number four.
Oh, did I have you in the wrong order? I'm sorry. Who was number two?
I am.
Okay. I got you backwards. I apologize. We're going to have, okay, we're going to go with Bernardo Huerta.
Hi. My name is Bernardo Huerta. I was born and raised right here in East Palo Alto. I've been coming to these City Council meetings since 1999, almost, I've gotten to see about 50% of them over the years. I mean, I really do come a lot. The city has, over the years, put me on, well, I was on the Planning Commission for eight years. I've been on the Public Works and Transportation Commission for 16 years. I've been on the Board of One East Palo for 16 years, and on the Board of Nuestra Casa for 16 years. The city also put me on like 16 other committees and boards over the years because they, you know, trust me that I'm out to get the best we can, I can find, for the city of East Palo Alto. The issues I'm running on is really focusing on what's causing gentrification in the city and engaging those entities inside and outside the city to, you know, slow this down, to hold them accountable. You know, I'm also, you know, because I've been on a Public Works and Transportation Commission so much and go find out what other cities are doing, really, the city really needs a traffic master plan, and that will give us the framework to, the legal framework to control a lot of traffic here. And, you know, we do have a surplus, and I think the city should reopen the parks and rec and community service they had that has been closed down since 2006. And you see that in every other community but this community, and it needs to be opened somehow. And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. I believe number three is the candidate that's not here. So now we will try Ruben.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you.
Oops, that was the end of the last one.
That was short and to the point. Yes, thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you, the League, for this forum. I'm currently on the City Council, and I'm seeking reelection. I feel very strongly that I have contributed over the years, as many people have, to the public life of our community, to the progress that the city has made. I like working as a team with my fellow colleagues, with the management, and with the community, and there are times when we disagree, but I really do feel that, over the years, we have made a lot of progress because of that. Thirty-five years ago, we became a city. I was involved in that movement in order for the city to have its own voice in regional affairs. That has helped us. We were a little too late with traffic, for example, because there was an option that would have not gone through the city, through the heart of the city, to reach Don Barton. Now we're faced that. We're faced with that. I think that, right now, the council is really engaged in finding some short-needed solutions. I'm in support of, you know, having more speed bumps, having a special police traffic unit, having, even building some parking structures to help us with that. Housing was another big issue during incorporation, has continued to be that, and I've always been a very strong supporter of rent stabilization law, protection for renters, opportunities for people to buy their own home. Public safety, I believe, is an area where the entire community, the police department, the council, different organizations have helped. We've reached, I think, a milestone in that we have reduced violent crime, but there's still work to do in order to keep enhancing the public safety for everybody. So I ask for your support, and I'm sure we'll have some questions to get into other details. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. We're going to wait the five seconds before moving forward. Okay. Oh, all right. I think we're there. All right. Next, we have Court. Court Skinner.
That's right. I'm number five, but there's only four of us.
It's only four. We have them.
Hello. I'm Court Skinner, and I'm running for City Council. I don't know how many times I've said that over the last several months, but tonight I was going to change it. Hello, I'm Court Skinner, and I'm ready to take on the job of the City Council member. So I've been here for 30 years, and for the last 20, I've been a serial volunteer, helping wherever I can. I wanted to tell a story about my grandsons. I have two grandsons who actually went to school in East Palo Alto. My daughter told me today that she would never have sent them there without my being here. And they went to Creative Montessori Learning Center as a preschool, and they learned Spanish, hard work, social skills, and they learned the value of being immersed in a diverse culture. And now they're very successful high school students, moving on. I've always worked, and I eventually became the president of the Creative Montessori Board of Directors. I've always worked to get things done. I worked for the Water Co-op, the O'Conna Tract. I worked IT in the Community Legal Services. I used to pick up bread from Costco for Bread of Life. I worked with students pretty much for the last 20 years from Job Train for the Oxford Day Academy, and getting computers for students with my little company, Computers for Everyone. In the course of being on the Planning Commission for 14 years, I learned to work with the city staff, gotten to know them very well. And if elected, I use this experience, my contacts, my relationships, to create jobs, reduce traffic, make housing more affordable for everyone that needs it, and to grow by using conversation to create good plans and collaboration to implement them. So I'm ready to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I am now going to read, I am now going to read the statement that Regina Wallace-Jones sent us. "Good evening, East Palo Alto guests and friends. A very dear aunt in my family passed away on September 29th. Her only son requested that I join the funeral to celebrate her home-going and to give remarks at her funeral service. My aunt exercised undying love for me throughout my entire life, including cultivating my inner musician and my love of all musical genres. I am in New Jersey this evening and will consequently not be able to join you in this final City Council forum. Please accept my apology. The League of Women Voters has been gracious enough to allow me to submit an opening statement. Since the format of this forum is Q and A, it was difficult to anticipate what you would ask. I'm unable to participate beyond sharing my opening statement. Please do take time to review the forum presented by East Palo Alto Neighbors in partnership with St. Mark's AME Zion Church, hosted on October 3rd. I believe that forum well represents my approach, ideas, and undying love for the city of Palo Alto, East Palo Alto. I will also make myself available to answer your questions one-on-one when I return. My name is Regina Wallace-Jones, and I am running for East Palo Alto City Council. I am dual-degreed with a bachelor's in electrical engineering from Stanford and a master's in public policy from UCLA, and I've spent the last 20-plus years working in high tech, first as an engineer and later as a tech executive. My participation in the high-tech community has been a gift to my family because it has allowed me to engage with the innovation economy as a full participant. As a child who grew up with humble means, it is hard to dislike the opportunity that my participation in the tech economy has afforded me, but I maintain that I care about technology to the extent that it can assist communities like ours in solving tough problems. East Palo Alto has many tough but interesting challenges to solve, and we need leaders that can scale the intellectual challenges of our time and maintain the deep love and compassion for community that is only known in cities like ours. I am running for City Council because when my husband and I moved here almost two decades ago, I knew then what I know now, that East Palo Alto is a great city. I love the spirit and energy of our people, the blend of cultures and traditions, and our strong conviction to leave a great legacy for our children. In our city, we have everything we need to achieve our greatest vision of success. Together, we can increase regional affordable housing, embrace new industry, plan for continued growth, and invest in our city's future. As a daughter of union laborers, I understand the value of hard work. I understand the struggle to find affordable housing and jobs that pay livable wages. As a Black woman, I know how to transcend expectations and accomplish tough goals. As a tech executive, I see the big picture, and I will negotiate advantageous outcomes for you. I am endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Labor Council, the Service Employees International Union, and the Dem Fem's, and I share publicly that I am no on Proposition 6, which is reduction of the gas tax, yes on Proposition 10, rent stabilization, yes on Measure HH with noted caveats, and yes on Measure W for Get Us Moving San Mateo County. I have the vision, the skills, and the perseverance to help East Palo Alto navigate toward a more prosperous future. I will fight for your hopes and dreams for the city. Together, we will rise to meet the future. I would be honored to have your vote."
Three and a half minutes.
If there was no timing on this?
Yeah, we're watching the settings up here. But she doesn't. I might continue. She has it.
Okay. All right. I also have a statement from Patricia Lopez, and this is much shorter. "My name is Patricia Nape Fino Lopez, and I'm a third-generation resident of East Palo Alto, and I love our community. It would be an honor to serve as a City Council member. Our community has gone through so many changes throughout the years, and to keep up with the development of our city, we need to transform City Council as well. The invasion of tech companies, lack of affordable, below-market-rate housing, and our failing education system are the areas that I would like to work together as a community to fix. The joining of major tech companies to our community is inevitable, and it comes with many benefits. However, the only way that these companies, such as Amazon and Facebook, are beneficial to our city is if we, the residents, are given jobs within these companies. The invasion of the tech companies surrounding our community has brought forth high-rising rent that is hurting our long-life community, who are the hard-working core. I have seen many longtime family and friends of East Palo Alto pushed out to other cities because they can no longer compete with the higher income of tech workers flooding into our city. The lack of affordable housing has forced so many families to live in RVs and cars. Many children that are enrolled in the Ravenswood School District are homeless or have been homeless. Our schools are failing our children and, in turn, our community. We must be able to provide a community where children can get a good education and to one day be successful and able to afford to live in the community they know. We need changes, and we need new leadership. I hope to be a part of the City Council so that I may serve each one of you and fight for us to all be able to stay in our beloved East Palo Alto. I will vote yes on Proposition 10 to repeal Costa-Hawkins, and yes on HH measure that will tax corporations and tech companies to pay for their fair share, and I will vote yes on the Proposition 6 to repeal the gas tax that the legislatures passed without bringing it to the people." Okay, so those are the opening statements. Now we will take some questions, and we're going to go in a different order. Okay. One note, if you are putting together a question, we want to have the questions be applicable to the four people who are up here, so please don't address them to one person individually. We'd like to have all four people be able to answer them. So we're going to start with Bernardo this time. "Most residents of East Palo Alto are renters. Each member of City Council will need to do a lot of hard work to keep renters stable in their rental housing. What are the tasks that you personally find most difficult to prevent displacement of renters, and how will you manage these difficult tasks?"
Well, a lot of what goes on outside the city is not being looked into by City Council. You know, all of the cities around East Palo Alto know exactly what we do, what is done here. The city's always been for affordable housing for its residents, and Menlo Park and Palo Alto, Facebook, they're just going, is pushing us on. We have to look at the incremental projects or things that they do that affect us and hold them accountable. So, you know, I know rent stabilization will continue on in the city. Might have to in the future better that if Measure 10, oh, not Measure, the state Measure 10 does pass, but it's holding these, you know, I'm for holding these organizations outside the city, and the things that this city approves accountable that impacts the rents, you know. When Facebook said they were going to build in Menlo Park Phase 3, it raised the price on rents, and 63% of the houses are rented here in East Palo Alto. Got to hold them accountable to that. That kind of issues, you know, you can look outside the city, and right around us, that's happening, and I will look for all those elements and stay on top of them and, you know, hold people accountable for these things. Because if not, we're always, the city's always going to these agencies after the EIR comes out. That's way too late. The rents are going up now, and they should be held accountable for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Ruben?
Could you repeat the question, because there was a part I didn't, it was about the tests or the tasks?
What are the tasks that you personally find most difficult to prevent displacement of renters, and how will you manage these difficult tasks?
Tasks? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I think housing, we can all understand that there's two different populations. You know, there are people who own their homes, and they're able to, in a way, offer much more protection for their families, and that is part of, I think, what we all try to do in our society. And then there's the people who don't own property, and so they rent. And then within that population, we have people who rent in buildings that are owned by nonprofit corporations. We have some here. The most recent one is the senior housing, that's for low income. We have several projects that they're owned, and they raise the rent, but they're reasonable, they're more humane. Then we have the ones who rent, and they're strictly in it for the profit, and that's their right. However, within that group, there are also people who I think are predators, who exploit people, who put money before human beings. And in East Palo Alto, we have a history of having passed a law, which the voters have always supported, which protects a certain segment of the population. But the hardest thing for me is to see people, some of my neighbors sometimes try to help them, knowing that we still live in a semi-futile society because a landlord, if there's no local protection, a landlord can just give them 60 days and say goodbye. You might be the best tenant that's ever been there, you might be a senior, you might have children, but they can get rid of you. Nobody can help them. Our society, I think, in East Palo Alto, I feel, has led the way in our area to show that we have compassion, that we have a certain political philosophy, that we say, you know, shelter is important for people. Most recently, we've been dealing with the RV situation with homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, we, no applause till we're done. Court.
Thank you. Well, I'd say the task that I find the most difficult is going to be dealing with homeowners who are renters. In many cases, these are, there's people, this is their only source of income, so you can hardly blame them for raising the rent. And unfortunately, the current rent control ordinance, as a result of the Costa-Hawkins laws, which, of course, is what Prop 10 is all about, is eliminating those protections, prevents us from applying our rent stabilization and just cause-for eviction ordinance to single-family homes. So dealing with that is a difficult task, which is what she seemed to have answered. Now, in addition to that, everything that everybody else has already said is absolutely true. It's tough, and certainly, bringing in people with higher incomes who can afford higher rents leads the whole rent structure to go up. The other problem is that we've got, even though 40% of our units are under rent control, 20% of them have turned over in the last year or two, and because of vacancy decontrol, the rents have already gone up on those. Now, they're protected far into the future, but we only have 20% right now of our affordable housing that is actually protected by rent control. All of those issues are going to have to be addressed because we do have to find a solution to allow people to stay in this city.
Thank you very much. Okay. Donna.
Thank you. I've seen lots of families displaced from the community. Unfortunately, landlords are increasing their rents. I'm glad that we do have rent stabilization program that helps keep these low-income residents housed. Unfortunately, when they are able to move from a rent-stabilized apartment, it goes back to market rate, which we're still losing residents. I think, as we move forward and we build more houses, that there has to be some type of, like, deed restriction, where, you know, the family moves in and they have to stay there for at least 55 years, and, you know, there'll be some rent increases, but the house or the apartment can go to their family members. Okay? So, and then we need to look at zoning also when we begin to build more apartments. There might be some places that, I don't like to stigmatize anybody and just say, this is for low income, but it should be a mixed, mixed rents, so that nobody knows that I might be the low-income person. So it's a daunting task, but I think we can address it.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next question, "As a City Council member, how would you address our city's water shortages?" We're going to start with Ruben on this one.
Well, excuse me. The good news on the water is that the city now does have enough water that's projected to not only address the current needs, but even current development that could happen in the next several years. So we're actually in a good place. What we need to do now, however, is to develop some emergency supplies in the city. For many years, many councils have worked on this, is to have the Gloria Well, which is right on Bay Road behind City Council. It's now 99% complete, and that will provide us with a reserve, since we now have been able to acquire additional water. And the city also is developing a well behind Home Depot in Pad De, which happened to be a little piece that the city owns, and there is good water there. So as far as the supply, I think the city is in good shape now. And, you know, it's taken many years, many people working on it, but working with our neighbors in Mountain View and Palo Alto, we now have that. One area we do need to work on much more is the infrastructure, because the pipes are very old, and that's not necessarily the supply, but we lose some water through that, and, you know, eventually, but that's in the works also for the city to begin doing some work and having a stronger supply, I mean, a stronger pipe system. And, you know, there's also the area of putting some tanks in order to have a complete system of water, and so we're working on that, trying to find someplace. Also, you should know, and I think people do know, that there are two independent water districts. For example, the whole area in the Palo Alto Park by the freeway and Bay Road, East Bay Shore, it's not the cities, and we need to somehow work with them more closely that, so that we can join our resources in that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Court.
Well, there's one big, important thing that I only recently heard about. Apparently, the water pressure on the west side is such that if there were a serious emergency, unlike the ones that have happened in our neighbors to the north recently, we'd be in, we'd have a serious problem. I'm going to propose, as a City Council member, that we look into building essentially a big water tank on the west side to make sure that there is enough supply for emergency water in case of some serious emergency. Now, I've been on the O'Conna Tract Water Corporation for many, many years. They function perfectly. It's a real pleasure to deal with those people. They have an unpaid board, they have two employees that work part-time to deal with the 300 or so customers that they have. Unfortunately, the Palo Alto Park Mutual Water Company is much less, much less competent, and that's a problem that I think is going to have to be addressed by the city in one way or another in the relative near future. And of course, the American Water Company, which is the water company that supplies most of the city, has its own problems, mostly with incompetence in billing and turning off water when it shouldn't be and things like that. I'm hoping that can be, that can be addressed just by continued pressure by the city on them. And... And finally, we have about, now we've got maybe four million gallons a day of water. Palo Alto generously gave us a half million gallons a day from their 17, of which they never used more than 12. We need more than four, and I think we need to continue to press on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Donna?
Thank you. Forgive me if I cough. My allergies are really acting up tonight. So in regards to the water shortage, it has been partially resolved. And, you know, I sat on the recycle water board with Palo Alto and Menlo Park and Santa Clara. And the discussion was around the fact that East Palo Alto didn't have enough water. And we, the council did a groundwater study that showed that by 2030 or 2040, we would run out of water. So the city imposed a moratorium on building because we wanted to make sure we could service our residents. And so I'm thankful that Palo Alto actually gave us some water, that they were just, it was just going out, so. And Mountain View did the transfer with us. So we're going to continue, like the mayor said, we're going to use the Gloria, Gloria Way well and Pad D. And, and we need to ask the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to increase our water allotment, because we got the lowest allotment in San Mateo County. And we were a young city, not really knowing all of the certain things that we needed. So the amount of water that was asked for at the time, who would have known that we would be more conservative in our, our use of water? And so, but it's still not fair. And we've jumped through hoops to try to get them to increase our water. It's not over with, and we appreciate the fact that they've met with us.
Thank you. Bernardo?
Okay, this is a public works question, and I've been on the Public Works and Transportation Commission for 16 years. I do know for a fact that there is an interconnect between the two other water departments here in East Palo Alto other than the city allotment itself. I'm glad that Mountain View was able to, you know, sell us 1 million gallons and Palo Alto pretty much give us the right to buy another half a million gallons of water a day. This city uses almost 2 million gallons of water a day. So there is interconnects between these two other, other water companies. Palo Alto Park, the O'Connor Track, which is on the other side of the freeway. But there's a lot of politics there, and there will be a little, a little more politics. They keep fighting. And regardless of the, the politics, we must be able to supply those two other water companies with water. And this is about enough water. We should have our fair share for the residents first, because there will be development. So we have to first get our share first, and then we could deduce what's going to be allowed for development. The city is also required to have 2 million gallons of emergency water, and we need to build those tanks. Yes, one can be built across the ramp and, you know, a half-million-sized gallon water tanks. These are for emergency reserves that the state requires. So this can be done. I just really don't rely, would not rely on American Water. Everything we do with them, with their contract that they got about a year and a half ago, they double the price on it. A water meter that costs $75, they're charging $800, over $800, because they charge their, they double the price and they double on their interest to the community. They're outrageous. We need to buy the stuff upfront and then deal with them.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, what ideas do you have to assist local business to stay in the community? We're going to start with Court.
Well, first of all, we should probably make cannabis something that we talk seriously about, because that's going to generate a lot of local business. Controversial as it may be, there's significant interest that I've discovered in the community. So that's one, one thing. In, in addition, we need to start encouraging individuals in the community, residents, to actually invest in businesses. We tend to wait for outside people to come in with Starbucks and Jamba Juice and, and other, other businesses, where the bulk of the, the revenue goes outside the city. Restaurants like La, La Taqueria, La Conzuela, oh, well, I can't say it.
La Conzuela.
La Conzuela. All that revenue stays right here in East Palo Alto, gets spent here. And the more that we do, the richer we get. So we need to find ways to both educate people on how to start their own businesses, put together structures and organizations that encourage that, get builders to provide spaces that make that recognizable, and continue to do, continue to press on that until we have. And then, of course, we need jobs and customers, because it doesn't do us any good to have a bunch of beautiful businesses here if nobody attends. So we've got to find a way to keep the people in the city during the day to take advantage of all those businesses. So we'll keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Donna?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What ideas do you have to assist local business to stay in the community?
Local businesses, you know, I think back to when we had Whiskey Gulch. That was where our local businesses were. And they were almost like the lifeline of East Palo Alto. And it was unfortunate that, in having to develop a tax base, that those businesses were dislocated. And we, the council, said, we're going to make sure you have a place in, in the community. However, that promise was not kept, unfortunately. And I certainly know that we do have some nonprofits that have been doing a lot of training, such as Renaissance, and to help educate and help residents grow their own businesses, and we should support them. I think that I don't want to see any more businesses left out of here in this community. And I'm going to do everything I can to continue to have the local businesses here. The development, the developer's going to come and not really benefit the community to the extent that it should, but if we can support our local businesses, that would be a wonderful thing to do.
Thank you. Bernardo?
Well, as far as the, the former redevelopment agency, they passed some measures here in the city to close down the businesses. You know, the few that are left right here in the city are concentrated in the Ravenswood Business District. There's like 21 of them. They passed this measure to close them down in five years. That five years came and went, and they're right now giving extensions. We need, if you want to keep businesses here, you take away those extensions and say, they can be here until development really starts. And then for them to be relocated in that, that business area is, is part of a, a, an exchange for them to, to build. That will keep those businesses here. So, and other, you know, the, when Amazon or Zabrato had paid off the city like $1 million to not have our businesses and their building, that money was to go to keeping local businesses or starting local businesses here in East Palo Alto. $1 million, I don't know how it could, it was spent, or has it been spent? But it should be used to keep businesses here as far as, you know, business licenses, permitting, all that, that the city, that they, they would have to pay into the city. And these, we need to come up with affordable space for them. You know, inside new developments, require more local businesses inside the city and, and through contracts with these big developers or big companies that would come here. Because if we just go for office only, we'll be known as, you know, the Amazon City or the Facebook City. I don't want to be serving that moniker, you know? We can, I, I, I would go for more retail. This place is a ghost town at night, when, you know, you have to go all the way to El Camino to find some good food. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben?
Well, the city council has given, I think this is the second grant to Renaissance, specifically to work with the current small businesses and people who want to start their small businesses. So I, I know that it's a very, it's not easy for people to start their businesses, and even when people start them up, it's not easy to survive. You know, as far as ideas for what's coming in the next few years, I feel that, yes, you know, I think mistakes were made in the past by, you know, the, the development. It's, it's difficult. Sometimes I thought, well, you know, everybody who's doing business, you help each other. They're all in business, so the big business would help the medium business, and the medium business would help the little business, but it doesn't work that way, unfortunately. There is competition. But I think that in the new area that is going to be developed, this time around, I feel that we need to require that we build an area, a building, and house 100 micro-businesses. There are so many people in this town that have their little home businesses. And sometimes they're, we know they're operating underground, but that's, the, the economy that operates to serve the needs of people, I think, sometimes operates like that. It gets started like that. And rather than us going after them and feeling that they're doing something illegal, they're actually doing something to serve their community, but we need to build a place for them. Because right now, for small business to find a space and afford the rent, we know that even in Palo Alto, it's got so many businesses, they're going away because they can't pay the rent. So I feel that if we have a space, we need to have a space where we invite people with tiny little businesses. And from there, they can grow, and they don't have to end up in East Palo Alto, you know? I think people start their businesses wherever they're successful, you know, I think that's good, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question, what are the top three crime problems in our city? We're going to start with Donna.
Just when I'm having my coffin spill. The top three crime?
Crime problems.
Problems. I'm not really sure, but I've heard rape, car theft, carjackings, theft from the stores, the retail stores. Could be some, some others, but those are the ones that I've heard recently. And when I was talking about the police department and the question about the budget being so high, that's why we need, you know, more police officers to patrol and enforce the, the law. I don't want to see this city, our retail area, being, having to have a security guard at the door. I see that happening right now, but I, I, I just never thought we'd get to that point in this, in this community. And everybody that goes into those stores are not going in to steal. They have plenty of money to buy whatever they want to buy. Unfortunately, there are a few folks that feel like it's a necessity for them to do that. But we have enough police and, to enforce the law now, and they, whoever's breaking the law should, you know, pay the price.
Okay, thank you. Bernardo?
Okay. From, from, the last time I looked at it, this police statistics, it was like rapes, break-ins, and assaults, you know, assaults at the homes. Before, we had a lot of assaults, like here in the street, you can walk down the street and you'd get confronted by somebody and, and stuff like that. That is not happening much, but it's still happening in the residential areas and stuff. So, and, and the rapes, that's, you know, also happening in the residential areas. The break-ins in the cars and the, inside the homes, it's also happening in the residential areas. So, you know, there's, you know, what the police can do is, is get more into the residential areas, be seen more in the residential areas. To change the police's priorities, because they have priorities. Oh, we're going to catch so many drunk drivers, we're out to do this, we're out to do that. It's, it's difficult, and it takes the whole city council to try to convince the city police chief and the, the police men themselves to be more in the community, to make these folks that are doing this know that the police are right around the corner, and they will be caught. I do not want to see that happening again, you know? I grew up fighting hundreds of people here. And, and, you know, I tell people I got all the stitches to prove it, but there's nothing to be proud of that, you know? And that's because I just, anywhere you would walk around, back in the days, you would get into an altercation. And I, I used to box, I didn't mind. So it's, it's, but yes, the, the police should be more in the communities and not just at the beach, but be known for being in the communities. And maybe that'll help bring those numbers down. But you, there'll always be another top three. So it's, you work on the police's priorities, you know, it's hard to change, you know?
Thank you. Ruben?
I mentioned in my opening statement that public safety is still a high priority. It is for me, I think it is for the community. We reached the milestone by reducing and controlling the most open violent crimes, where people are shooting each other for any number of reasons, people are being killed. I think we should give ourselves a lot of credit for that. But as has been mentioned, I think, both between Donna and Bernardo, that there are crimes around property, assaults, and domestic violence or just violence that takes place in the family that often the police gets called to. And so, you know, I feel there's a couple of things that we could do to, to help with that, because we, we need to move to continue to provide safety so that our community feels protected. One is that in the, in the old days, there used to be some resident academies where people would go through a training, and they would be certified to be of assistance to the police, primarily in their neighborhoods. And I think that we, it's probably time that we revive the neighborhood watch programs, where we, we can have people walking around, we can have people looking after each other. And as far as the police doing that, I think the, the philosophy of the current chief is, he goes and walks the streets, he goes and shows up and talks to people. He encourages the officers to do that. I think, I think we need to look at a new plan, and the chief has been talking about that, needs to come to the council to put more, if, if there's some changing in the way that the shifts are created, it's possible to put more people out on the street, more officers. And I think we need to move to that and find ways to have the community also look after each other. I also feel that the violence in the, in the families is something that requires our attention, more attention. The council did provide some funding.
Thank you.
For Cora, for example.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go to Court?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yep. Do you have an, you have an answer to that?
I've not answered that question, no. A couple of nights ago, I walked out my front door and heard some sirens going. And about 30 seconds later, I heard this. The next day, I looked at the truck that the driver who was being pursued by the police had hit. And it was just crunched. So, on the other hand, I look at the, at the statistics that are published on a fairly regular basis by the police department, and their listing says theft, auto theft, aggravated assault are the, the primary in the last couple of months. Aggravated assault, I'm sure, includes domestic violence, which is a sort of an ongoing problem. As far as what we can do about that, you know, I remember many years ago, we talked a lot about community policing. And since we don't talk about it much anymore, I thought we were well on our way to doing that. Now I'm not so sure. The police, in individual cases, I've, I've The police, in individual cases, I've talked to people where they have a favorite policeman who's there on the job doing what he needs to do. And some of them travel long distances and still manage to get, you know, kudos from the neighborhoods that they serve. Others, less so. So, I think we need to work on getting all of them in a position where they know the neighborhoods, they know what's going on, they've got their pulse on the, on what's going on in the neighborhoods. And that does two things. One is makes people think twice about doing something. Two is it makes people comfortable in calling the police when something goes awry. So, we still need to do some work on that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The next question. The city has no comprehensive recreation program. Do you have, I'm sorry?
Did I break it?
Something happened on, we're counting up versus down. The timer is not quite right.
Yeah, but it just started after East.
The city has had no comprehensive recreation program. Do you have any interest or willingness to develop a recreation program for all ages? And we're going to start, there we are, we're going to start with Bernardo.
Okay. Well, it's one of the issues I was always telling people that I'm campaigning for, is that, you know, this year, the city does have a $44 million surplus. The city, I guess privatized back in the days in 2006, the parks and rec to YMCA. I don't think it's worked because we're not showing up there. I think we should start up a program again, like Maida had before, but, you know, we need a building for that and we need staff for that. I don't know what it'll cost. It, you know, we have to develop, the city would have to develop a budget for, you know, maybe two, three staff members, you know, somebody also writing grants. We can get money from there, from the county, from the state, from the feds that would help out with that budget. You know, I remember the, the Maida had a program where it was $99 for daycare. I don't know if it was for months or for a day, I mean for a week, but for daycare for 99 bucks back in 2006 was still a deal. I'm sure, you know, other monies from the county and all came through, but we need to start a program like that. Like I said, you see it everywhere else. I go to Redwood City and I go to Redmond Park and I look at everything that they have there and we don't have anything. So, I go to Menlo Park and they, 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 they make me feel bad because they say, oh, your folks is always coming over to our fields and stuff like that. So, we should be able to have balls and programs for the kids for the summer and, you know, even preschool, which is very important, you know, to get established here in the city. Again, we need more preschools and I, and we do have the money to do it, we just need to get a budget and some folks behind it. If not, the nonprofits here in East Palo can do that.
Thank you. Ruben.
Well, first I do want to make a correction. The city does not have a $44 million surplus. It actually has 16 million unassigned money, which means, and the council will be looking at that in the next couple of months because, just because it's unassigned does not mean that, you know, we can do anything we want. We know we have a lot of, a lot of needs. We've been talking about the water infrastructure, the pipes that are breaking down. We know we have streets that still need to be surfaced and that they'd be safe. We've been talking about police. I certainly support the city doing more in recreation. I do feel that a lot of groups out there are doing that. There's a lot of sports groups, a lot of different organizations that are doing some of that. And so, I would be interested in looking at something that could be a partnership that would be public and private. You know, the Boys and Girls Club, although their focus is primarily academic, now which I think is good, they do provide recreation, the YMCA does too. The other big elephant in the room is the school district. And I do hope that some new people get on the school board because the city council has tried for the last five years. We have tried and we have offered to say, let's develop a joint use agreement because they control most of the fields, they control most of the gyms, and they have refused to do that. They do that with Menlo Park. So, if you go to Bell Haven School, they have an agreement with Menlo Park City that they can use the field and the city will do the recreation programs. I think that we, we can do that here, but it's going to take the school district come into a census and saying, this land does not belong to you. It belongs to the community. It should be open. Right now, it's locked. You go by the fields and they're locked up. What kind of message have we sent into the community? So, I do agree that the city needs to do more work, but we can't do it by ourselves. So, that would be one thing I'm willing to pursue again. Hopefully, some new people will get on the school board who are, who will say, yes, we'll sit down with you like we do with Menlo Park.
Thank you. Court.
Well, I noticed you said all ages. And I go to the Y every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday and participate in exercises for what we refer to as active older adults, sometimes called seniors. And so, a few people can take advantage of that. As we came in this evening, I watched my friend Arnold over there learning salsa dance. He just walked into the library and there was a salsa dancing class going on and that covers a few more people. I agree that we need the fields to have some serious youth sports. That really, that really has to come and we have to make sure that works. But, and of course, I'm also think that the senior center would be another opportunity for teaching seniors and working with maybe even young people to learn exercising, table tennis, ping pong, dancing, ballroom dancing, square dancing, a lot of things to keep both generations fit or more fit than they are now. But it is clearly something that needs a priority in the city. And if it means we've got to create a whole new structure, then we have to create a whole new structure. But it would certainly make sense to share that responsibility with students, with the school district. Because it isn't, it isn't working the way it is now.
Okay. Thank you. Donna.
Yes, I agree that we don't have enough, we don't have any recreational department. And I agree that we need to partnership with Ravenswood City School District because they do have a lot of land. That won't matter in a couple of years because they're going to use part of their land to build housing. So, we need to get our, get a word in now. And unfortunately, you know, Mr. Mayor, you did dispense with our subcommittee liaison for the Ravenswood School District. And even though we tried to do some things with the school district at a point in time that they did not respond, it shouldn't have put an end or stopped to council members who wanted to pursue trying to work together with the school district. So, I certainly would support that happening again. And if I'm reelected, I'm going to revisit that. And it takes money and we will need to just designate money towards recreational kinds of events. And I agree that, you know, the developers, we can have an ask that they build a building where we can have recreational activities because I think we don't ask enough of the developers. That could be a benefit to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Next question. After yesterday's madness on the Dunbarton Bridge, I know this is going to be a hot topic. What can the police traffic unit do to help us with traffic? Is there a way we can have a toll to collect money for the city? And we're going to start with Ruben on that one.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't on the council during that time, but university is actually owned by the state and it should have never been turned over to the state of California. So, we don't have control over University Avenue, whether we like it or not. That's a fact. And so, we have to try to do other things. I think a traffic unit, you know, motorcycles can at least try to control people more, definitely give tickets to those who create dangers. There's many areas where there is congestion, but it's those people who then try to, you know, do dangerous things that need to be cited. And so, in the long run, I think now the idea of having a light rail over Dunbarton Bridge makes sense. It's always made sense to us ever since we got stuck with university connecting to the bridge instead of going along the shore, which it should have done. But, you know, we are, we are stuck with that situation. But the Dunbarton Rail could, I think, could help us in many ways in that many of the people that come over this way to work could park in Fremont or Newark, areas where there's a lot more space. And that way, they travel by light rail. There's ways people could still use their bikes. You know, I think we just have to keep raising that issue and, and do the best that we can. I think other ways is to create more shuttle systems within our city, small shuttles that move people back and forth. And if we, you know, get off our cars, we can move around. One small thing I'll say is that finally, in a few months, we will have the first pedestrian bicycle bridge over 101. And that's another project that I think everyone has always supported and that will help too.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Court.
Well, I think one of the very first things we need to do is get, is stop commuter madness. We have commuters that come down, whip into Runnymede, go down Euclid Street to end up at East Bay Shore and then create madness there. And I suspect they probably save, yeah, probably 12 seconds off of their commute time rather than just staying on University Avenue. I even went over and talked to Kamal about that and he pretty much agreed. Now, Menlo Park just put up some A-frame signs that said, no right turn on Willow, 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock in the afternoon. Not particularly enforceable, but hey, the commuters didn't know that. So, the traffic calmed down a whole lot. We can also, even though we don't own University Avenue, apparently we do have some control over it. And there are a number of ways we can, we might even want to restripe it. We might want to set it up so we run three lanes one way in the, in the morning and three lanes the other way in the afternoon. So, there's a lot of interesting ideas that we could exercise there. But if we keep the commuters on University Avenue, that puts the pressure on all of us to figure out how to fix University Avenue, all the way up to the, to the state. And then we have Measure W. And I saw the propaganda on Measure W today and I was really impressed until I listened to my friend Andrew Boone explain that it's run by the Transportation Authority who's never seen a car he didn't like and never mind bikes and never mind walking, just make those, make those highways wider. And of course, that just puts more pressure on everything. So, Measure W unfortunately, I'm afraid, is not the answer. But the answer is in our heads and we've got to work on it.
Thank you. Donna.
Can you ask, and give me the question again, please?
After yesterday's madness on the Dunbarton Bridge, what can the police traffic unit do to help with traffic? Can we have a toll to collect money for the city?
You know, I suggested that years ago when I was, when I was on the council and people laughed just like they did when you read that question the first time. They laughed. I didn't think it was funny, but, and then a couple of years later, very recent I should say, one of the staff person said we should charge a toll. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if that can happen, but maybe we should ask for University Avenue back. I also sat on the Dunbarton Rail Committee years ago and they were talking about this and, and each city gave a portion of money to make that rail happen, but somehow it was spent somewhere else and they ran out of money. So, it kind of died and there was not too much talk and then it just resurrected probably in the last couple of years to revisit that. Yeah, I think we do need more traffic officers out. We need some motorcycle officers because folks are speeding up and down University Avenue. They are cutting through neighborhoods and I do think there should be some no-turn signs. And I think that it's, it's a hard nut to crack, but I think we could find ways to do it. It's getting worse and we need to encourage folks to get out of their cars, find other modes of transportation. So.
Thank you. Bernardo.
Well, it's, the state does not own all of University Avenue. It owns from Notre Dame Avenue to the railroad tracks out there. The rest is owned by the city of East Palo Alto. What we can do, we could put signage, you know, stay out of the residential areas, you know, quit, you know, those maps that they have on their phones that say, oh, this is red and this is okay. You know, we could keep them off of there if we have signage up. The city can't put up signage. There's a three-ton limit, but it's, you know, we don't get any enforcement by our police department. I asked the chief and he didn't have a response from me. So, we need to, you know, have some enforcement because, you know, there's people going, blowing through these stop signs, stoplights and disrespectful and almost running over anybody, you know, that's, you know, they're very wary about crossing University Avenue. So, you know, enforcement is needed, but to do more, you know, is what Menlo Park is doing. And get involved with what Menlo Park is doing. That traffic, Transportation Master Plan, they'll be able to charge impact fees for traffic. We can do a master plan also, but we have to get that rolling. But, but we also have to get involved in what Menlo Park is doing because that would tell us how much traffic is going to be ending up on university also. So, I'm already dealing with them. They do want to hear from me. I have written to them. So, and, you know, the money that, you know, I helped with a program back in 2004 to get a Measure A, I guess it was back then, but it was to, for traffic, for a $1 increase on the bridges. And guess what? Bart ended up with that money. And recently, Bart said, they're not going to pay that money back. So, all those years, they were getting that money, they built Bart and we're not going to get it back. We should get our county people to get that money back.
Great. Thank you very much. This is going to be the last question. We have a number of other questions that were submitted, but we are out of time. So, we apologize for not getting to all of them. What are your positions on Measure HH and Proposition 10, which is Costa-Hawkins? And we're going to start with Court.
Okay. Measure HH and 10. Measure HH is the tech tax earmark to tax any, any office building that has more than 25,000 square feet and use the money for affordable housing and other worthwhile projects. A downside in my estimation is that that money will then, once it's taxed, it will probably be given to one of our many nonprofit organizations, which will take its toll and eventually do a little good. I would have preferred to sit down and negotiate with the developers that have built these buildings, maybe even before they built them. And we talked about developers putting up a water tower. We talked about, someone recently suggested that we get the developer who wants to build a building here to build a new city hall. And of course, I look at that as a, as a technique to get wholesale instead of retail because they can build buildings cheaper than we can collect tax money, turn it over to a nonprofit and buy them. On the other hand, Prop 10, which it's too bad we don't have more influence than we do in the, in the way that goes, would be a real boon. That would eliminate Costa-Hawkins. It would allow us to essentially create our own rent stabilization and just cause for eviction ordinance and put in all the things that we want, putting it back to local control, which I see. which I support.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Donna.
Yes, I support HH and I'm glad that the city council had the wherewithal to have the staff investigate, putting that on the ballot. And they did an excellent job and I'm thanking all the people that worked on it to, you know, get the word out there. Unfortunately, when Amazon came before council, I, I didn't support it. I abstained because I felt we needed, I needed more information about what Amazon was going to do for this community. And I felt there really were no benefits for this community because even though we had the first source hiring, they came up with their own alternative first source hiring. So, you know, the council welcomed them and they also voted that night. But, you know, I don't believe in being pushed against the wall because some things are not good for us. And I really wanted more time to study the issue and, and then make a decision. But they said, "You vote for it tonight or we'll walk." And quite frankly, I will say this publicly, in my mind, I did say walk because I knew if they walk, somebody else would walk right in. So, and then on 10, I, I do support it and I hope that other folks support it too.
Great, thank you very much. Bernardo.
Well, I am for Proposition 10 to repeal Costa-Hawkins. That would probably make, give us some rent control to that 60-plus percent of houses that are rented here in East Palo Alto. That would be very welcome. So, and while I'm on the committee to pass Measure HH, so I'm for it. There's some, you know, I was convinced to go, to, to work on it. But, you know, 15% is supposed to go for city staff to administer this, 35% is going to go to the, you know, the programs. But that other 50%, is what bothers me. I think 100% of that 50% should be used for buying land now. To save it up and then we'll buy it later, that, the value of money, it, it keeps going down. So, to buy these large properties around here, if $1 million can be somehow leveraged to buy some other large properties like that Olson property on Weeks where the affordable housing is supposed to be built on or next to it, you know, the city should try to buy those lands. Those lands can later on be developed to make more affordable housing. But I, you know, that, that 50%, I'm never for just giving money to the city because it, you know, when you, I, the hardest thing I've ever tried to do is try to talk when it comes to budget time. The money just disappears. And I just, I gave up on trying to talk when it comes to budget. I told you, I always come to city council meetings, but when it comes to budget, I, everybody knows I stay away because I can't get anywhere. And I think, I don't want to see that 50% disappear.
Thank you. Ruben.
Measure HH is a special tax that has very specific purposes outlined in the, in the, in the ordinance. 35% at least must be used to build housing, affordable housing. Yes, 50% will be left to administer the, the programs. And the rest of the money can still be used for more housing or can be used for job training opportunities for the high-tech industry and for building trades. You know, we live in a time, probably the worst time of inequality people are saying since the 19th century. Why? Because people around here, their wages don't go up, housing goes up, price goes up, everything goes up. And then you have these big, huge companies and they do a lot of good work, but they create, they make the inequality even worse. Why? Because all the money is going to the top. Those are facts. All the money is going to the top people. And so, you know, our tax that we're putting before the voters, well, I'm not speaking as a council member, I was a candidate here. And so, I actually want to encourage people to vote for it because it, the office industry, office industry, the large office industry makes tons of money. And our idea is that they should share some of that for these things that the community can benefit from. So, you know, there's been a partial tax that the homeowners provided their little money to help us to prevent violence. You know, we put a tax on the ballot that the voter supporter, supported also to charge the big landlords Measure O so that they, they could be somebody to help with displacement. So, it's time that the big companies put in their little fair share to help our community. And we always hear, "Not enough people of color, not enough minorities, not enough people in the high-tech." Well, we're going to have to do some of that too, train people.
Great, thank you very much. Now, we're going to move to the concluding statements and each candidate will have two minutes for their concluding statement. We're going to start with Bernardo.
You know, the reason I'm running is people, the last two elections, people have been, you know, getting, wanting me to run. Some people get upset, "Hey, you're not running again." But, you know, that's why I'm running, is people really want me to run. I always help people with the second units. I've been doing that since 2013 and I've had a lot of pushback and people see that, hey, I found where those pushbacks were from, you know, even in the new development code. There were six pushbacks to all the work I've done and I'm not through with these guys. I want to really straighten that out. If we're working for it, we should, I shouldn't have pushback from staff to do that. So, but that's why, you know, people want me to run because I've helped them with all kinds of housing stuff and municipal, municipal things inside the municipal code, I explained it to them. You know, I don't point the finger, "Hey, go ask this guy, go ask that person." I tell them exactly because I try to read it all. I think I have the knowledge, the experience. I've been in so many committees and commissions and boards in the city over the years and I've been coming to these meetings. So, I, I, you know, I think I can, I can be able to do this, you know, get on, you know, other than the budget, when it's budget times, everything else, you know, I've had a lot of experience in. I can sit here and get going. It's not a, there's no learning curve to me. You know, I've dealt with difficult people. I smooth them out. I don't get into arguments. I, I just, you know, step back. I, I read up a lot and, and what rhetoric, you know, as far as, you know, what Judge Judy does, you know, she can tell when somebody's lying. I, I, that's me.
Thank you. Ruben.
Well, once again, thank you for this forum, for an opportunity to, you know, share our ideas and our hopes and our challenges in, in, in moving the city forward. I, I hope that in the next few years, with a lot of development that is going to be proposed before us, that we apply all that we have learned in our short history. We're only 35 years as a city, although we're, I think, a longstanding community with a lot of knowledge and information. But we have learned from some of our mistakes. And that's why I mentioned the idea of making sure that we create a physical space for small businesses and micro businesses. If we don't do it, nobody's going to do it. The big businesses, they're not going to do it. So, we have to do it this time around somehow. The services, I think, as has been mentioned, I, I am definitely in support of us also by now. We do need to pay more attention to, you know, the human development of our community, the services, the recreation, the way, the, the need to specifically address the services needed for seniors, for children, for youth. Because we'll never be a super rich city, but we are making progress in that area and we need to try to apply those resources and the resources we can access. You know, I look around and recently, we're going to, they're going to open an EPA Arts Center. There are many beautiful buildings going up. One that I've been thinking about, because that includes a new jail that was built and, you know, I think it's much better than you, but all these new buildings go around. I think it's time that we, as a city, working with other organizations, build a brand-new, state-of-the-art child development center. If we don't invest in our children, since they're little, make sure they have good healthcare, good education, so they can sustain the economic and social life of our city. So, I want to work on that.
Okay. Court.
Thank you. Thank you for this whole meeting. Some of the things that we haven't talked about tonight that are of interest, we've talked about housing. That's one of my top priorities. Traffic, another one. And what I have, we haven't talked about, is I call quality of life. And one of the aspects of quality of life is enforcing parking. That's sort of part of traffic. But parking is one of those things that makes walking and biking more difficult than it really should be. And we have laws in the books. If those laws aren't working, then we should change the laws. But if they are, then we should enforce them. We need to work on the city appearance. I mean, it's okay to have a cleanup every now and then and often we have individuals that go out and actually pick up trash all over the place. I don't know how we instill some pride so that we don't have to pick up quite as much trash as we seem to have to pick up, but I think that needs to be done. Another issue that concerns me is the operation of the city council itself. I think there needs to be two things. One, much more robust debate about the various issues that are facing us and the decisions we come to. It means everybody has to do their homework and everybody has to stand up and, and make their, make their position known. And then we need to do a much better job than we do of communicating how and why those decisions are made, being transparent. And I, if I'm elected, intend to do my best to make all those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, finally, Donna.
Can you repeat the question?
That's, it's your concluding statement.
Oh, okay. Yes. I'm, I'm running because I'm a longtime resident and I really care about this community. I came here in 1968 and I wanted to give back to the community somehow. So, I decided to volunteer. And I actually volunteered for the Ecumenical Hunger Program under Miriam Nixon. And I really enjoyed working with the older elders of the community, Carmela Oaks, and I really shouldn't start naming off folks, but had the opportunity to really learn a lot of wisdom from them. And then continuing to be involved, got married, and then I got involved with the school district and served on that board for a long time. I want to continue to give back to this community. I don't have a problem having a robust conversation, debate or whatever. I think I talk too much as it is, but we have to be clear on the vision. We have to be clear on our goals. I'm clear on all of that. I'm not here to step to another elected office. I've been asked to, but I said, "No, I want to be here in East Palo Alto." I, I've earned a place on this council and I've been honored to be elected very many times, although I've never been endorsed by the Labor Council, I've never been endorsed by the other endorsers. It looks good on, on paper, but you know what? My community endorsed me all the times that I have run. And I would hope and humbly ask that you continue to support me because I want to continue working for the city and residents.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Let's give them all a round of applause. We thank our candidates for their participation and also for your willingness to run for this important office and we wish you all good luck. We also thank our league team members that have been working here in the background and the city of East Palo Alto for kindly hosting this event. And we thank you, the audience, for coming. And we remind you to vote between now and November 6th. Your ballots should be appearing very soon, so please vote. As a reminder, be sure to look up additional information about the candidates and state and local measures as well as a video replay of this forum that will be posted soon on the league's election website, which is www.votersedge.org. If you're interested in learning more about the league, there's literature at the back of the room or ask one of our league volunteers. And thank you again for spending this evening with us.